In a second. We are live on Channel 8 in YouTube.
Great. I'd like to call this meeting of the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee to order. We are operating remotely as per the emergency orders as per the Baker-Pleito administration. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I believe we have a flag, so if we would stand for the pledge. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible. Great, thank you, everyone. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded by Templeton Community TV and it's also on our local cable stations. It can be found on Facebook, so I want to again just always thank TCTV for helping us out with the broadcast of this meeting. And I will go through who we have on the call this evening. For the school committee, we have Mrs. Mattson, Mrs. Kojel, Mrs. Chartier, Mr. Marx, who doesn't have video on yet, and Mrs. Trifilo. We have Dr. Kazavant, our superintendent. I believe I saw, yep, there she is, Kate Kalis, our Assistant Superintendent. Anne Marie Geister, the Business Manager, Susan Barney, our Executive Administrative Assistant extraordinaire. We have Abby Bennett, one of our student reps, and I don't know, Abby, if anyone else will be joining from the student reps, but if they do, once we get to that point, obviously, I'll add their name in, and myself, Mrs. Hughes, from the school committee. So we do have a quorum. And we will begin our meeting with our business. We normally do minutes. I know I did not have an opportunity to review the minutes, but if there's enough people, does anyone want to make a motion or does anyone would like more time to look at the minutes? We can approve them next meeting. If that sounds good to everybody, it's just, that sounds good. I see some heads shaking. Okay, so we're gonna put off approving the minutes from January 20th as well as February 1st when we meet next week. We'll put them on the agenda and that'll be just some of the regular business we do before we jump into our budget presentation next week. So thank you for deferring that. We have bills and payroll up next. I would entertain a recommendation to accept the bills and payroll warrants as presented. Were there, are there any out there? I didn't notice, Anne Marie, were there warrants to be approved? Because I don't see.
Yes, yeah, I snatched them, but maybe after you saw it.
Okay, yeah, and I printed this two days ago, so it probably was, and I don't have double screens tonight, so I'm I'm kind of running off the cuff with this one. So I would entertain a motion to approve, to accept the bills and payroll warrants as presented.
So move.
I have a motion by Mrs. Kojel. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second by Mrs. Trifilo. Any questions or comments on the bills and payroll warrants? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mrs. Mattson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kojel?
Yeah.
Mrs. Chartier?
I'm going to abstain. I think that's the right move as treasurer.
Yes, okay, thank you. Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Mrs. Trifilo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes. So the motion passed with five approving and one person abstaining. That was Mrs. Chartier. Okay. Next up, we have our student representative. We have Abby Bennett here with us this evening, so I'm gonna turn the floor over to Abby to give us an update from what's going on from a student's perspective and any other information you'd like to share. So welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Hughes. My name is Abby. I'm a senior here at Narragansett. And so I would like to start by saying that since our last meeting, we are fortunate to have been granted a snow day. It was very exciting. You know, administration and the yearbook posted lots of pictures of how students and staff spent their day. We were really grateful to have a nice day off, especially, you know, a nice break from virtual learning. And then, since we're now in February vacation, you know, we're able to rest after what seemed like a busy end to semester one. And so hopefully, from this break, we'll be able to start semester two, or it started, but you know, continue semester two very strong. And then, as far as sports go, both the girls' and boys' basketball teams were fortunate enough to play roughly 10 or so games each against other schools. And, you know, the students were really glad that they were able to make something work during these difficult times. The games were livestreamed and posted online, which got really good turnout from the community watching. And then, our next Fall 2 season, as they're calling it, will be starting in March, so more sports will be starting then. I apologize if I missed any sports this past season. Then, lastly, the Warrior of Leadership students have been really working hard to do more positivity-themed projects for our school. And so, last semester, they did like game nights and posting weekly positivity, you know, quotes and slides and things like that. Then they were also doing Penn Pals, so, you know, reaching out older students to younger students to really get the community involved. Then, next semester, we're gonna be trying, or this semester, we're starting new projects such as, you know, making a positivity wall in the high school lobby. So that'll be made up of student artwork, you know, things that will help boost the school spirit. Then we're starting like a study group, so that'll be, you know, kind of like a peer pals, but like a student mentoring kind of virtual thing. Then we'll also be having student-run social media pages, which is really nice. So the students are getting to share things that they think are important. And then, you know, we're still gonna be continuing these previous projects. Then, just this past week, before vacation, actually, they sent out a survey. It was like kind of a Valentine's Day-themed survey, so it connected people with like interests. So we're hopeful that that will, you know, help bring people in that weren't really friends before and hopefully, hopefully bring positivity up in the school. Great, thank you.
Great, thanks, Abby. It sounds like there's a lot of great positive things going on. I love the, the study, study groups that will be happening. That sounds really good. I know that a lot of students find it difficult with our hybrid learning model, or even those that are remote, so that, I think, is gonna be a really great thing for a lot of students. So it sounds like that Warrior of Leadership group is really taking the bull by the horns, they say, and just coming up with a lot of great things for the students and the activities. So thank you for sharing with us. Anybody have any questions or comments for Abby? Nope, nope, I think, I think we're good. Thank you, Abby, for, for your report. And as always, welcome to hang out with us as long as you can. I know that you do have a meeting on these evenings, so whenever you have to drop off, not a problem. So thank you. I did want to announce that Mrs. Robichaud has joined us from the school committee. Next up, we were supposed to have a presentation by our Director of Pupil Services, Matthew Holloway. He had actually asked if we could defer his presentation for a month. We went, underwent a review by the state of some of our programs and those, the results of that review are due back, I think, within a week or so, and he asked if we could put off his presentation so that he could report on the results as well. So we said, not a problem. He will be back with us probably in March, at the end of March, and he will be able to present all the information he was preparing, plus the results of the survey. So that'll be a good presentation for next month. Next up, we have public input. I don't believe that Mrs. Barney has received any emailed input, and I'm going to apologize because I failed to bring up the YouTube feed. Are there any comments or anything that we need to address at this moment?
No, there are not.
No? Okay, we'll keep an eye on it, and if we, if we're able to review any of the comments as they come up, we certainly will. So we thank the public for tuning in and watching us. Mr. Mason has joined us, so I just want to add that out to my list. Okay, so, next up was the NDEA. I don't see any reps from the NDEA this weekend, and that's fine. This is vacation week, so I hope that all of our teachers, of course, all of our staff are enjoying some downtime and, and taking some time for themselves. Next up, we have the budget. A quick FY21 budget status update, and then we're going to do an FY22 budget presentation. So I don't have anything really new on my end to report on the FY21 or 22 budget from a state perspective. I don't think there's really much new information that's not going to be covered in our presentation. So with that, I'm actually gonna turn it over to Dr. Kazavant and, and Ms. Geister and whoever else needs to speak. And we'll, we'll move forward talking about FY21 and then into FY22.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So what we're gonna try to do is, Anne Marie and I are going to try very hard to kind of split the conversation. I'm gonna try to share the screen, which will be, which will be interesting to see what happens. So if, if it doesn't share, let me know. I don't know if you can see it. Hopefully, you can. All right, so far, so good. So, you know, in terms of talking about the budget, you know, one of the things that we, we struggled with early in the, in our conversations, we didn't have a lot of information at the, you know, at the time when we were trying to put something together. And generally speaking, it's, that's a, you know, that's a frustration we feel every time during this time of the year. We're trying to get state numbers, Fed numbers. This was a little bit more difficult, just given that the pandemic has made everything more difficult. But I will say that the, for the most part, in, again, and certainly Anne Marie can correct me, unless there is a seismic shift at the state level or at the federal level, we have all of the numbers that, you know, all the information that we need to present the budget. So that's, that's good news, right? So we're not waiting, say, on a Chapter 70 number or something to that effect that would really, you know, really not allow us to speak, at least with fidelity, you know, in regards to the budget. So we do, in fact, have the numbers that we need. So I'm going to, what's, just so everyone knows, this is not a slide, a PowerPoint presentation. We actually put it on a PDF, which I can scroll back and forth. So if I'm a little heavy-handed and I fly back, fly through some slides, I apologize, but I'm sure that will happen. So actually, what we decided, you know, in terms of giving you this update for the presentation, we're going to, and I know that folks hate, you know, folks like this, but I'm gonna tell you the end of the movie first, before you see it. So that way, you know, a lot of this can get lost, you know, the main points can certainly get lost as we go through, you know, a presentation. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ruin the end of the story, so to speak. I'm gonna give you the, the ending first. And so, let's see, it's already jumping three, two, see, look, I knew this was gonna go. So what I'm gonna, oh, there we go. So ultimately, we always start with needs, but, and, you know, when we, when we started to talk about that, and I'm actually one page, see, this is gonna be, there we go. Ah, we'll see how this goes. All right. Usually Kate man, man's this part of it, so it's, it's a good lesson for me. It's gonna take all available funding resources to adequately fund the FY22 budget as we present to you today. And in, as Anne Marie and I will go into in depth in this, you know, we, we see the reality that, and certainly our recommendation, that we'll have to use every penny of the E and D, and again, we'll, we'll get into this. We have not added an additional, any additional staff through the general fund, although there will be a considerable increase to class sizes at the elementary level, and that's something that we're gonna talk about here today. And we were able to maintain level services because of the various COVID grants. But in the end, we, when we were, when the math was done, we were still $188,345 short. But that will be covered by CARES II funds. So we're gonna present, you know, I've presented five budgets to you. And so never have, I don't believe, I given you all the information upfront, but this is, it's, it's, it's a really, in a way, so we're gonna take the path now to show you how we, how we came to this realization. So the district needs is where I started incorrectly a few minutes ago, but we, we needed a high school physics teacher or science teacher, but specifically for physics, and to expand our Project Lead the Way program, which, by the way, you know, is one of only 11 programs in the state, K through 12, and we were recognized earlier this year. But we also knew that we needed to do it to, we needed to provide this with no additional cost to the district. We need to ensure that all the academic and special needs services remained intact, which, again, given some of the information that I'm going to provide you, you'll see that that was yeoman's work and it took some creativity. HVAC upgrades needed to be advanced to a more technological monitoring system. We, as the school committee knows, we, we moved pretty quickly at the end of the summer to mechanically improve our HVAC system, which, of course, provides, you know, fresh air and filters the, the, the existing air and, and we, over a period of about five to six weeks, were able to meet the standards, not only the, the standards that we identified in the MOU, but that the, that the national associations had set in terms of outside air flow. Class size reduction at the elementary school, that's a need, but, and it certainly is going to be one of our pressing concerns, which we'll, we'll get to, but it's gonna be difficult. And we knew that we had the need to address learning gaps, social emotional needs related to COVID, which has really, you know, has made a lot of news lately when we start talking about gaps in learning. So how are we gonna meet those needs? Well, we, we're going to, and again, these are specific to the bullets ahead. So when we start talking about the high school science teacher, we, and I'm gonna use, I'm gonna use specifics on purpose because it's important for folks to know and for you to know how we were making this all happen prior. We, we lost a music teacher, a high school music teacher, I would say, at the beginning of September, maybe at the end of September, beginning of October-ish. And that was Mr. Jody Clapp, who actually filled almost three roles for us, music. He taught physics and he also taught some math for us as well. So when we lost that position, we not only lost a great guy, but what we, what we ended up also creating are two holes, with one within our science program and one within our math. So the plan, and to meet those needs, is that we, of course, we filled the, the high school position for this year anyway with an interim music position, but the idea is to take one of our two music teachers that we have at the middle school and placed, placed that music teacher solely for high, for high school music and hire, utilizing the position that was the, the position of the music teacher at the high school and take those monies, if you were, to actually hire a, a science teacher for the high school. So, and again, so as we look at the needs, we, we've met the goal. We've, we identified the need and we were able to cover that without additional cost to the district. Or to jeopardize the scheduling, which is obviously very, very important, especially when we start, you know, looking at the high school and middle school schedules. We, we needed to reorganize special education delivery. We're gonna talk a lot about special education tonight, and you're gonna see that numbers have certainly increased, but they, they have, they've increased only in certain areas and, and again, we'll go into that, but we knew that we had some folks in positions that we could either, either eliminate positions or restructure, and we're gonna talk a little bit about that later. We gotta explore opportunities with both towns, so the green communities programs, you know, in terms of our HVAC, but as well as anticipated grant opportunities through the federal government. What we know is that regardless of whom people voted for, for president, either, both administrations want children in school now. That's if, if, and now, there may be a different path, and the conversation may be different, but both administrations feel that children should be in school sooner rather than later. With that, though, comes some, some pretty expensive upgrades to, to schools. We are very lucky here in Narragansett. Our HVAC mechanically is very sound, and again, we, we spent, again, we spent quite a bit of money to make sure that that was so in terms of filters and regulators and the whole bit, but that is a, that is going to be a recurring theme sooner rather than later, and so we are starting to look at those opportunities. We need to use CARES funds to reduce class size to address learning gaps, and we're gonna talk about CARES, but what folks know at the elementary is that there are three teaching positions that have been funded through CARES I and that we will utilize CARES II in order to keep those teachers for the next school year, but it's going, it's gonna look a little different. And again, we'll talk about that. And we're gonna need to expand our summer school programs. And by expanding, I mean that, again, a lot of this information is trickling out, not only at the federal level, at the state level, but we, we know that we want and need to offer opportunities, you know, for students during the summer to help close some of those gaps that were just inherent of COVID. So, and all, you know, what I clicked it to, but I'm not gonna go back because I'll probably lose the entire presentation, but we didn't want to come here with issues or, you know, goals without, without answers. And so that's, that was our, kind of our focus. Enrollment has been something of, of a myth. It has been, you know, folks have, when we start talking about enrollment and we, and either at the state side, locally, even, even across the country, what we know is that many, that our enrollments have declined. And many, many districts, when many districts' funding depend on per student, whether, you know, well, certainly in Massachusetts, but across the country. But it was what numbers that folks were going to use at the state and federal level to fund us really became our conversation. So, and it's still a conversation because they, they did use our October 1 numbers. They did. In terms of the foundation monies, et cetera. Now, we're held harmless, which means that we are, in essence, receiving, we're receiving funds for more kids than we actually have. And we've talked about, we've talked about that almost, you know, almost every year coming, you know, when we start designing the budget. But I wanted to show you something here real quick in terms of when you look at just this, you know, when you look at this year. So if you look to, for example, October 1, 2020, our elementary numbers, you know, show 569 students. So this was, you know, this was October, on or about October 1, and we took those numbers. And then, again, we just, on the 17th, we, as we do monthly, we took another census report. And you'll notice that, that we gained 17 additional elementary students. And so, you know, as we were talking this through, some folks, well, that must mean that, you know, students are back, maybe coming off of, maybe out of homeschool or, you know, some other, you know, variables. That's not the case. These were 17 move-ins. We're gonna talk about homeschool here in a little bit, but when you start looking at our elementary numbers and you just look like October 1, which was, you know, a few months ago, and look to what was a few days ago, you know, we increased by 17 students. You'll notice that the high school went down roughly, was it, you know, six, six students. Two of those students were life skills students who aged out of the high school. So we're holding, not only are we holding steady in terms of our school enrollment, we actually have increased the number of students that are, are in the district. So this really colorful graph. And so hopefully, I'm gonna explain it because what, what we need to do is we, we really need to project, and the only way to project is to, is to look at cohorts, okay? So I'm gonna talk about homeschool. When we call it, and we call this slide, obviously, the homeschool factor. So the homeschool factor is that to your left, FY20, up here, is what you would see typically for the number of homeschool students for these, for grades K through 5. You know, as we look back over the years, the numbers may change a little bit here or there, but for the most part, this is a, is a good representation of how many homeschoolers we had K through 5 in the previous years. If you look just immediately to the, to the right of that, to FY21, you see an increase, obviously, close to about 38 to 39%, but we saw quite an increase of students that, that parents decided to homeschool. Now, when we did homeschool, when they would call in to let us know that they are, because they have to un-register basically from the district, many of them, you know, and I, and I'm gonna say in the high 80s, 90% of, you know, percent of folks told us that they were, in fact, homeschooling because of COVID. There was a reason, if they gave it. But they also said that they were gonna come back once they, you know, once everything, you know, certainly got better in terms of COVID. Well, when that is, I mean, I, I would, I would imagine is, is up to the individual parent. But I want to kind of, I want to give you a sense of where we're heading because those numbers that we showed you earlier, you know, they, they didn't include homeschool kids. So if you look at, for example, and really all you have to do is just follow the color, but if, in fact, you know, oopsie. Let's be careful. Sorry, guys. If you look at FY20 and you see the number 2 and you look diagonally, you see 12, you know, obviously, by next year, that's plus 10, right? Those are 10 kids. Now, so if 2 is basically our average, what we see, and now we're sitting at 12, well, that's, you know, that's 10 more kids that I would, that I need to at least at some level, expect to return. And you could do that across the board, and we did that just for the elementary. So you can see that if, you know, for example, the third grade next year, if, in fact, you know, the average is around four, and but 14 of those, you know, first graders this year, or last year, they're, they're this year's second graders, well, that's another plus 10. So in other words, we could very well see a situation in which 10 kids come back who were here just, say, in August or September, or certainly were enrolled, and that creates a problem. Because if you look below in projected classroom sizes, and it's just a straight across, is that you are looking at numbers of, you know, 28, 30, and 25, and, and obviously, you can see that. And that's what the, the potential is that if homeschool students whom were just enrolled, come back to this, you know, come back to their classrooms, come back to the, pardon me, to the district. And that's not taking into account any additional move-ins, et cetera. And if you notice, again, because I, I want to make sure that, for those of you of the community who are watching, is that we really only have four teachers per grade level that are funded through the general fund. Okay, so if COVID didn't happen, it just didn't happen. We only have budgeted four teachers, and of course, that was established, I guess, two budget cycles ago in terms of, you know, failed override, et cetera, et cetera. So I wanna always make sure that, you know, I go back to this because it's important for parents to see what the potential is, and when that'll happen, if it will happen, we'll, we'll have to see, and we're hopeful that, you know, that we're all back in school traditionally next year and for all the right reasons. But next year won't, it, it won't look this bad for all the grades, because, and I'm gonna stop right after this because I know I've just dumped a bunch of information, but we're going to utilize the three COVID, I mean, pardon me, CARES II those teachers that we have at the elementary school to offset, and physically, they, they currently are servicing just our, they are just servicing remote kids, kids who are remote. That won't be the case next year. They'll actually be in the building and they will actually have a classroom, and they will offset our highest three grades, whatever they may be. It looks to be second grade, if, you know, and it looks to be the third and the fourth grade, but you never know until you know. So we're lucky in the fact that we have these CARES monies available for FY22 to help keep these class sizes down to a manageable level. But again, I want to make sure that I, I keep, you know, I just keep repeating that those monies will not be But again, I wanna make sure that I, I keep, you know, I just keep repeating that those monies will not be here forever, quite frankly, and we all, and we're, I think we're all, we're, we're very aware of that. So what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna, hopefully, without screwing up the PowerPoint, I'm gonna just stop for a sec because we've talked a lot about, we've talked about a couple of things, right? So we've talked about overall enrollment, but we talked about the district needs. And, you know, the way that we see to meet them. And so I'll just pause there and ask if there's any questions I can, I can answer now before I, I move on. Or I can just keep moving on.
I, I know I can't see everybody's square, so if someone on the committee does have a question, please feel free to unmute yourself and ask it. Otherwise, if there's no comments in the next few seconds, I'd say, go ahead and move on. I'm just trying to see flip through quickly. I don't see anybody raising their hand, so I think it's fair and safe that if you wanna move on. But anyone, if you have a, a question, please feel free to just speak up, since I can't see everybody.
So, our old friend, school choice. So we've talked a lot about school choice over the years. It, it certainly is, and has been, you know, utilized in all the appropriate ways as a revenue stream. But as, as we all know, that we, we took, you know, a pretty firm stand on school choice last year. And what do I mean by that? Is that we, we, you know, like I'm sure many other districts, but we've, we followed the DESI guidance to the, to the T. And that, and for us, that meant that as people moved out, families moved out, they, many of them requested that they would be able to keep their children here in the district as school choice, and we, we, we use the term, uh, school choice in place for that. And we did not do that this year, this, this last year, or this year, pardon me. Because, well, first off, COVID certainly, you know, that we didn't know what we didn't know, quite frankly, moving into this, but we also are pretty full at, not pretty full, we are full at the elementary level and are getting there at the, at the middle school. So we decided to, the committee decided that we would not accept any school choice kids, with the exception of six who, students who were pre-K at the time and were part of the old, how should I say, yeah, really the old way of doing things, that they would come in with the expectation that they would be able to matriculate as school choice students into, into, into the district, and there were six of them, and we, we, we honored that, and that, that, that is sunset. But a couple of things I just wanna point out is that, and if you look at the numbers that it, you know, obviously, we were, we lost 57 school choice kids. As, as folks know, what was really part of our plan is that we always would take enough school choice to, in a sense, cover the amount of school choice students that we lost as graduating seniors. And those whom were eighth graders who, who went, who went back either to their districts or went to Monty Tech through their, through their, their individual, their home districts. We didn't do that this year. So, but, and, and so I've been, I've been very worried until the preliminary report came out in December, is what would be this differential? And of course, to lose 50, you know, just 57, and if you multiply that by, well, if you take in six, okay, so 51, multiply that by 5,000. So, when you, when you take that into account, that's, that's a lot of money, if nothing else. But something interesting happened, and, and maybe it's COVID related. I like to think that, again, these numbers have been trending down for the last three or four years, but we had the fewest students, school choice, out of the district, which, which helped us quite a bit. So, you know, and again, that's been, that's been a steady trend, but we've, and when I look back to several, five, six, seven years ago, even before that, 109 is, is one of the lower numbers that we've ever had, number of, of students to school choice out of the district. So that, that certainly helped us. So in essence, our differential was 83, which is not the lowest it's ever been, because it, it got very low. I think it was 2014 and 15. But it, it's, it's certainly much lower than it's been in the past. And, and so, again, we'll talk about school choice quite a bit, but what that is, and everyone is, remembers this, the slide, but you know, we, in terms of the receiving revenue, it's quite lower than we've, we've seen, well, since, yeah, definitely, since I've been here, for sure, but, but it's also the lowest sending tuition by a little bit, and are, the differential, the difference is, is certainly the lowest that we've seen over the last couple of years. So this, this, this looms as, as something that we'll probably need to address sooner rather than later in, in some capacity. If, if nothing else, through just lost revenue, but because this is, we spend every dime of school choice. So, in the end, Marie, do you wanna just take it for a second while I take a drink of water and hopefully, don't lose my voice?
So, obviously, this is the budget for the school choice, showing everything that we spent it on, but a couple of things I wanna point out is the past couple of years, we have had the Templeton Assistant Principal in here. This year, we were able to move that position over to the general fund. The teaching positions are still in there, but it's a goal to keep moving those each year, one or two over to the general fund as well. And the health insurance is, this number that's here represents three payments with nine coming from the general fund. So, we have made a little bit of progress in that respect as well, because a few years ago, we were 50/50 on health insurance. So it's slowly getting there, but I'm not sure at the rate we're going, if it's gonna get there quick enough. So if you actually go to the next slide, Dr. Casamian. So this is the forecast for the next few years of school choice that I put together. I'm just gonna tell you what it assumes. It assumes that every year, we're losing 30 students and we're not replacing them. In that every year, $50,000 in health insurance moves over to the general fund, that the teaching staff that we have planned in these numbers, it's a 1% increase each year. And then each year, one teacher gets moved back over to the general fund. And if all of those assumptions happen, you can see that this is only gonna sustain us for the next three years. So, school choice is something that we really need to have a conversation about and come up with a plan, like moving forward on how we're gonna deal with this. I don't know if anyone has any questions on that?
No, okay. So this is an important, you know, so we, we, again, the assumptions are very reasonable. And it really doesn't even, again, it, it says losing 30 schools, students each year. Well, we've already, think about that. We lost, again, the, the net, might be a little bit better, but 30 is an easy loss, right? If you're not replacing it, so. Okay, so, you know, there's some good news, you know, in a, in a way. Trying to, you know, try to, you know, lighten it up a little bit here. And so when we start looking at, when Anne Marie and administrative team look at this, and we start figuring out really our expense side, I, I have to say that I, you know, we do, we do very well with that. Again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna draw your attention to the percentages as compared to FY21, and certainly, you're gonna see some larger numbers, you know, you know, there, and we're gonna, we're gonna talk about them, but you know, all in all, the, the, the portions of the budget that, that, that we can, we can affect. You know, and so what does that mean, you know, making sure that we're, you know, not, well, well, we're budgeting tightly. And we've talked about that for years, about making sure we know where every dime is spent. And, you know, and making sure we're not duplicating efforts, and, you know, all those just really basic, but at times, you know, sometimes very hard, you know, rules to follow. And so when you start looking at, you know, maintenance, right? And I'm gonna let just Anne Marie, because I think that, you know, talking about, you know, in terms of facilities or just maintenance in general, we've, you know, we've been very tight around that. Instruction, obviously. But there's some other, and we're gonna get to this in a bit, but obviously, there's some very, there's some other numbers that we wanna, we wanna talk about in terms of where, where, what is driving our increase, right? What, what is driving this 2.61%, you know, increase overall? You've just heard from Anne Marie, it's, it's, it's certainly not raises or more staff, et cetera. It really falls into the categories of things that we are just, we're, we just don't have a lot of control over. And, you know, one of these big areas and is special education. You know, with COVID, or maybe, maybe just in general, depending, but we've certainly seen an increase in the number of students whom are on IEPs. Now, you know, folks, when we start talking about special education students or any, any specific population, you know, certainly, folks can become guarded and say, well, jeez, now you're blaming, you know, the students with special needs, you know, for your budget issues, and that, that's, that's nothing to be further from the truth. As a matter of fact, you know, in terms of numbers of, of kids on IEPs who are in the district, you know, give or, you know, we're, we're right around the average, state average. Those, and, and we have good, we have solid programming to support them. It's, it's these outside factors. So when we start looking at the increase of special education transportation, I mean, you know, look, just, that's a 20% increase on that, okay? When we start looking at, in the increase in out-of-district placements, and oddly enough, folks, we actually went down in the number of students that we send out of district, which is exactly the kind, why? Why? Well, you're just trying to save money, Casamian. That's not true at all. Yes, I do like to save money. There's no doubt about that. But there are students, you know, students who go out of district are, they're, they're warriors, they're Narragansett students. And we want them all to be here. We want them to be connected with their community because they live here. These are kids who live in either Phillipston or in Templeton. But when you start seeing an increase of out-of-district placement tuitions, you know, by, you know, over $100,000, give or take, and it's a 30% increase, I mean, it isn't hard to see, and, and by the way, we don't have much of a say, or we don't have any say over that. It is not uncommon and, you know, to see residential placements, which we have, you know, we have, you know, some folks, some kiddos in, you know, a quarter of a million dollars. You know, just for one, you know, and one student. And when you start looking into transportation on some of these programs, it's, it's, it's mind-boggling. So when you start looking at the special education costs overall increasing by 6.6%, when special education makes up roughly a quarter of your budget, you know, 24%, well, 6% of, you know, of that is going to make a significant difference. And, and it has, it truly has. And so what are we doing about it? Well, we're, we're, again, we've, we've committed almost, well, at least three or four years ago to expand, you know, the number of, you know, school psychologists and, and different programs here. And, and the reason why we're able, why we do that is that we wanna be able to offer not just kids with special needs and who are on IEPs, but all students, you know, a sound, social, emotional, you know, landscape in which to be educated. But we also know that many of our, when we start seeing increases, you know, many students are identified as having some emotional, you know, disability. And so we know that we need to be better prepared, not only through special education teachers, but as a district, and we've worked very, very hard to do that. And I know that Matt will have information on that, because that was one of the focus of the, the evaluation last, which, which concluded last week. So certainly, one of the major concerns and drivers, and we are not the only one, not that that makes it any different, because I don't, I don't care about someone else's budget, but if we were doing something different that was increasing our budget and everybody else's was going down, I would certainly want to find out what we're doing. This has been a, a problem, you know, certainly regionally and across the board throughout the state. So, fixed costs, you know, we've talked about this quite a bit, but Worcester Regional Retirement, you know, will increase 28%. People have to retire, and good for them, but, you know, but that's something that we are not, we're not going to be able to, you know, affect it through the budgetary process. We, you know, or at least at this point. Employee health insurance, you know, will increase by 5%. Property insurance went up 17.5%. And yes, we are gonna start looking into some, some ways to, you know, if nothing else, cap some of these increases which have happened, and maybe Anne Marie can talk about that a little bit, you know.
On the employee health insurance rates, we've been being told that, oh, they're going up minimally, minimally. It's the rates that have gone up 5%, not our health insurance line. That 5% was a little bit higher than I was anticipating. That really doesn't equate to minimal to me, but I guess it could be a lot worse. And the general property insurance, it keeps going up and up each year. And now that we've added Templeton Elementary, I'm actually going to, I have all of the paperwork to start next week to put together a packet, to solicit quotes, to see if we can get some better prices to save some money on there, or at least keep it at what we budgeted, because every year it keeps going higher and higher over what we've budgeted. So hopefully, we can see a little bit of savings in that property insurance. But again, like, when you total up all of the fixed costs that we don't really have a lot of control over, they're 3%, there's, it's a solid 3% increase over last year. And again, they make up 20% of the budget. So when these increases make up the large part, it's really hard to keep your overall budget at a reasonable percent increase. But I think that we did a good job this year keeping it at the minimum.
Honestly, over the years, we've watched this number go down. We've, you know, we've really tried to keep our expenses when, you know, certainly the ones that we can affect. You know, they've, we've done, I really, I mean it, we've done an excellent job doing that. And that's really through Anne Marie's office, and of course, the building principals, et cetera. So you know, so when you have expenses, you know, okay, so if we, you know, 2.61% increase of expenses, which certainly is not, which is certainly within the, the average range, you're hopeful that you're going to, you know, revenue, at least nothing else, if nothing else matches that. Now, this has been, this is the issue across, probably across the country. In municipalities, schools, et cetera. It's, it's about revenue, quite frankly, right? So, you know, if you're gonna have a 2.6, you know, you know, increase in expenses, you're certainly hopeful to match that through revenue, and that's just, that's just, you know, it's certainly never gonna happen, but it certainly is not gonna happen this year, just given, you know, for example, transportation, which is just regular ed transportation. You know, we, we've, we're not going to be reimbursed close to what we, you know, thought that we would, obviously, because we haven't been transporting as many kids. That doesn't mean we've taken that money and, you know, done foolish things. We, you know, whatever monies that we didn't spend on the intended purpose, because of COVID, you know, because of COVID, we really put a lot of work into our HVAC system, quite frankly. Because, you know, if in, you've met Mike Netto, and certainly I am, I am, I'm drinking the Kool-Aid, right? I'm, I'm, I'm drinking his water when he talks about filters are great, and all these are great, but it's about, it's about what is your circulate, right? What do you, what is your airflow? You know, how, you know, how are you moving the air, you know? And, and so how we do that is through our HVAC system. It isn't just about filtering the air that comes in or out. It's about keeping that air moving and making sure that you're, you're not, you're not expending more energy, or which equals money, doing that. And so, we're, you know, we're looking to automate a lot of these actuators. And so we're, you know, we're looking to automate a lot of these, um, actuators, et cetera, which will literally save us, we think, anywhere between 10 or 15, 20%, you know, on utility costs, you know, we think, we, we, we need to, you know, we've made huge strides this year on some, uh, on some things, and so we're gonna continue to do that, but in the end, that's great. But in the end, we, we're only going to see a 1.66 increase, you know, in revenue, which automatically is a, you know, uh, ready-made, you know, deficit, just add, you know, just add water, so to speak. And Marie, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about, um, in terms of the, uh,
Yes.
The two, and, yeah.
Yes. So we, we talked a little bit a couple of weeks ago about, um, the S R 2 fund that the district was awarded, and part of the stipulation of that award is that up to 75% of the award is intended to cover the increase in the minimum local contributions to our member towns. So on this slide, I've added a column, which you can see, um, that shows each town's, well, the 189, 832 is the total of both member towns, what their minimum local contributions went up. So Narragansett was awarded 561,000, so of that, we have to subtract the 189, 832 that is slated to go to the towns to cover their increase, and then that remaining balance is ours to use for some of the things that we've been talking about, which, there's another slide, which we'll get into more. And I just wanted to also point out, um, you can see at the bottom, the school choice, we're losing almost $300,000 from the students that we've lost with those slides that were, um, a few back that showed the loss of like 57 students. So when we rely on all the health insurance and the salaries to come out of that, that loss of 300,000, that's almost two health insurance payments for me. So, so it's big, like revenue, revenue is tough. We just kinda keep seeing it go down and expenses go up. Chris, can you just scroll to the bottom, the next slide, so I can show the assessments? So on this one, it shows each member town's assessments, and what's highlighted in yellow is the offset with the S R 2 monies that covers the minimum local contributions for each town. So with those in factor, Phillipston is, their budget for FY22 is increasing $8,720 over their FY21 budget. And for Templeton, their increase is 233,931 over the FY21 budget. So Templeton's seeing a 3.39% increase, and Phillipston has an increase of .53. And really, most of that shift is, um, from the enrollment numbers. That's why Phillipston's is so low.
Okay, so, I wanna move on, we don't have many slides left. So we talked about E and D, um, we, and I asked a question, I believe it was during the finance meeting, I, I honestly don't remember which meeting, but I, I did, I asked for some kind of, I asked for a historical perspective, just over the years, just what, what was done with E and D? Because I really started, you know, you know, my education really on FY16, 17, when I, when I arrived. And, um, and so as I've said, I am, um, I guess, classically trained, um, by a, you know, wonderful, my former superintendent was a CPA who, you know, was always very diligent about, you know, monies and making sure the, you know, everything was, you know, put some aside, but, but I, um, but I, as I, as I look back at this, and again, it doesn't happen with, as everyone knows, it doesn't happen in the same year, we just kinda use this for, you know, the arrows and the color, just to kinda show that, you know, in FY11, that's gray, but you're really not really expanding it until FY13, or whatever the case is, we just kinda put a couple of examples up there, but for the most part, we have, in fact, used, um, well, again, historically, have used, you know, every dime, um, to, to balance the budget. I think that, you know, one of the, I think that, like, and I certainly made this, you know, the statement at that, in that meeting, that I can't remember which one it was, whether it be finance or just a, a school committee meeting, but I think this would be the year that we would do that. We've tried, we've, we have, in fact, you know, kept some off to the side in case, I, you know, I don't, I don't see that to be, um, an option this year, just because of, well, because of the school choice numbers being so low. Um, I think that the, um, you know, both towns are certainly signaling that it's gonna be a difficult financial year as well, um, and we've, you know, we've had conversations with them. And I think that it, you know, so, you know, and when I said in the beginning, like, all in, I think that that would, it certainly is not, um, precedent-breaking, it's, you know, it's something that many districts have done over the years, um, in order to balance the budgets. We've actually done a nice job, you know, a couple of years back to save a little bit of money from that, but I certainly think that this year, um, is a year that we're gonna, you know, it certainly would be my recommendation, um, because I'm not sure where else we would find it, quite frankly, um, to, uh, to use, utilize all the E and D. So, you know, one of the things that I wanna bring us back, right, because all we really think about is COVID, that's all we, everybody, that's all we do, that's, we just think about COVID. But if for a minute, you can allow your mind to, to not think about COVID, you know, this was just, uh, you know, an alternative universe, and we were non-COVID, um, and everything was basically the same financially, which wouldn't be hard, you know, to, uh, to envision it, we'd be 180, we'd, we'd be sitting here today, $188,000, um, give or take, short. And I, I have to say to you that with, you know, I do not know where $188,000 would come. Now, again, remember, we, we don't have the, the surpluses, you know, and say, uh, school choice, you know, et cetera, we've, we've cut teachers every, every year, you know, that kind of thing. So when you start running out of options, you know, I, I, I don't wanna say that, I'm sure glad we have, you know, S R 2 here, but I'm sure glad that we have that grand opportunity to cover this, so that we could at least balance, right? And by the way, provide the educational services that we've worked hard to, uh, to keep, um, and, and to create. So if this was a non-COVID year, we would be sitting here to somehow trying to figure out how we would, we would, you know, uh, there'd be no other, right, we'd have to, we'd probably be making up options, as they say, um, to find $188,000. So what is the CARES 2 funding going to go to? Well, we were awarded, you know, $551,000. You know, the subsidy is what we talked about just a few minutes ago, in terms of the monies that will go to the, um, to, to the towns proportionately. That leaves us a balance of 361. So that, so $188,000, I'm rounding folks, but obviously, um, would, would cover the, the shortfall, which is really mostly, you know, staffing areas, et cetera. The three COVID relief positions, which really are the teachers at the elementary school, uh, quite frankly, just so we're, we're very clear on that, that's, that's what they, that's what they would cover. And we're always having to, um, restock, you know, buy, uh, you know, new PPE. Luckily and thankfully, those costs have come way, way, way down since last March, April, May, and June, um, but we still have PPE needs, which, um, you know, we'll address through that. And I don't know that, I, we, oh, I, I usually have a questions, um, slide. Um, I, I, I know that I've said this before, but I, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the town of Templeton, um, for, you know, allowing us to, the PPE needs that we've had, um, allowing through their, um, their utilization, you know, through their allotment, we've, you know, in the very beginning, we've PPE, and I'm trying to think of some other, some other fact, we're off the top of my head right now, but, um, you know, that was, that really helped out, um, well, and our infrastructure as well, our, um, technological infrastructure, much of that was covered, um, by CARES monies, uh, slash FEMA, MEMA, whatever you wanna, you know, whatever, whatever name it's, it's under at this point, but wanna thank them again for their, um, for their cooperation, because, you know, in, in those times when we're trying to figure out how we were going to do a lot of what we did do, our doing, um, they were a very big help to that. So I just wanna make sure I say that again, seeing this is the budget, um, you know, meeting. If I had a slide that said questions, it would be up, but, uh, I don't.
Okay, I don't know if you wanna pull that down for your presentation, and then we just, so I can see if anyone has any.
Right.
I'll just kinda start with just a couple of general observations, because, um, although it sounds as, you know, we've got a plan to try and get through FY22, we're starting off in the hole for FY23 with $190,000 that, uh, in MLC offset for our towns, which obviously in FY23, I mean, I, I have to imagine there's gonna be another increase in FY23, so, um, our towns need to be aware, this is a one-time thing, um, and then FY23, they're gonna have to come up with that money, plus with other additional monies, that's very concerning, obviously. Um, and then, you know, we've got this $188,000 shortfall, which it sounds as if the S R 2 monies will give, are flexible enough to help us close that gap, um, especially because, you know, when we look at some of the things you've discussed with, um, learning gaps and other things of how we're gonna use those monies and strategically put them out there, but we start off FY23 now, 100, you know, $90,000 behind, because those, there's probably no grants. And, and again, we can't get to FY23 until we get through FY22. But it, you know, it, one of these years, maybe we won't be, um, so afraid for the future years coming out of the current one. So I, I just, you know, wanna make sure everyone's aware that, you know, yeah, um, it looks like we're gonna get through FY22, but, uh, and I think we've said this in the past too, that this isn't the year that we're necessarily too concerned with, it's gonna be the following ones, so.
I would say, can I, yeah, I, it's interesting, because you're exactly right, we seem, and by the way, we're not alone, right? So we, we just are able to squeak by here, something happens there, you know, we, we, we're able to, we've been, really been able to duck and dodge, um, as a district financially. I, you know, of course, I say, I, I have, I said this last, well, again, this was pre-COVID though, so I, I, I will give myself a break there, but truthfully, Anne Marie and I were sitting down, this was, I, I, last March, April, May, June, we're starting to see how this was, we're like, never, never mind, uh, 22. So here we are, literally only halfway through 21, going 23, is, is, unless, unless there are these, these continual, I'm gonna call them, not bailouts, but certainly these, uh, these grant opportunities, I, I mean, and, and, you know, the state as well, and municipalities are saying the same thing. So, you know, we have town managers that, you know, who are town administrators, um, who are on our list serves as well, who are going, we're gonna be fine this year, because we didn't spend anything, and we did this, we did that, we did this, but, you know, they're gonna go to their free cash or the, or whatever, um, and then what are they gonna do next year? So in other words, it's, it's, everyone understands that we've gotta do what we gotta do to get through FY22. But in order to do that, we're gonna have to almost expend, again, all of our, you know, our energies, or just utilize these monies that we know are not going to probably be available, um, for FY23. I, I hate to talk like that, like, well, but let's just get through it, but in, in a sense, you're right, we, we do have to get through FY22. I can't speak to FY23 other than that the entire district, probably the entire central mass corridor, right, out, out here, is going to start in a deficit, one way or another, right? Just depending on how you, how folks utilize the monies, either through S R 2. But that's, but that's exactly what we have. I was happy that we didn't have to, um, abandon any of the, uh, of our, you know, any of our projects, or, you know, our programs, or that we've, we've worked hard, you know, to establish, especially around social, emotional learning, but, uh, at the elementary level, and of course, at the high school level now, that the eighth grade is up there, and we're starting to see some, what we, what we think will be some nice residual effects to that, so.
What questions does the committee have for Dr. Casavant or Ms. Geister about the numbers that presented, and, and what the strategy that we're looking to implement to get, um, to an FY22 budget, uh, looks like? Don't think I see anybody with any burning questions at the moment.
So no, so we'll also know this, so the other part of this, um, and I certainly don't wanna belabor the, the COVID piece, right? But we, you know, we, we have a lot of, when I say extra positions, they, they are extra because they're being funded through grants, right? So, you know, we've had to, you know, look at what we need next year, and, uh, again, a lot, some will be leaving, we won't be having some of these positions next year, but you know what positions we're talking about for next year, but we truly don't know what school will look like next year. And, and, and I think that that needs to just, we have to say this again and again, when somebody says, well, you know, we'll be back, well, as I said at the beginning, regardless of who you voted for, both administrations wanted us back in school immediately. Okay. They, they had very different plans on how to do that, but they wanted kids back in school immediately. There is going to need to be some things that are going to happen, and by the way, I'm gonna leave money out of it for a minute, I'm gonna leave money off to the side, right? We all know we need money, everyone knows we need money. But there's, there's, um, a very conflicting, um, guidance that's coming out, either through the CDC, which everyone was like, yay, the CDC, well, be careful, uh, that, you know, depending on what side you sit on this issue, you know, the, the circumstances in which they've put in place that will bring children back, you know, they have a color system, everyone has a color system, you know, half, or three, 90% of the country sits in red right now, to this day, right now, and, and we're actually doing better. So, right? So you've got, you've got that issue, like, so the CDC came out with some guidelines, said, look, kids gotta be in, we don't need vaccinated teachers, which I'll say for the record, and to my death, is the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard in my life. If you want kids back in school, vaccinate your teachers, right? Vaccinate the very staff that are going to be there, I, you know, you know, I don't take many political stances, but I'm gonna tell you right now, the protection of these teachers are important, but that's, that's, that's looming large, because people are starting to now go, well, wait a minute, you know, when is this gonna happen? And so now we have testing, which is great, Massachusetts is only gonna cover the testing to the end of March. Do you know how expensive this testing is? Oh, my gosh, I mean, for a pool testing, it's something like $5,000 per, I'm gonna call it a vial, a, a container. If you do that for 180 days, times, you know, you know, how many different, you know, vials, forget about it, right? So, I mean, it's, it's, you know, we understand what the role, we understand what we need to do, we need to test, we need to be vaccinated, um, ventilation needs to be fixed, Narragansett sits in very, very good position, it does. I'm not just saying that because I'm the superintendent, I would tell you if we were not, because this is well beyond, you know, kind of the hyper, you know, yay, we're, we'll be all right. You know, we, we are far in, you know, advanced in terms of our testing abilities, I'm talking about the COVID rapid tests and the, uh, the batch testing, um, our nurses are trained up, not a lot of people are that. Um, our HVAC system is mechanically very sound, we are in good shape when it comes to that. So we, we are already at three feet, if you haven't seen how this information is coming out, if, if not in the news, but in these list serves, people are now starting asking questions of like, okay, they're signaling that they want us to go to three feet. All right, right? Well, we're at three feet, which, which, by the way, if I, we knew was the good, was the right move at the time, because first off, we can only fit like three kids in a room, you know, in some of these rooms, I don't mean to joke, but it was so few, it didn't make any sense. And so we're, you know, we're really at the point where we're like, okay, we're kind of where we're at. So I don't know how school is going to change, but I, I will say from our perspective, you know, short of money, which we'll always need, um, they're, they're going to have to take a very careful look in, through the school committee lens, you're gonna have to take, we're all gonna have to take a look at the guidance that's being now presented in terms of what teachers, you know, or teach, or school, school staff want, need, what parents want and need. By the way, everybody's on both sides of these issues about having kids in, what's the spacing, what's the distancing? By the way, everybody's on both sides of these issues about having kids in, what's the spacing, what's the distancing, how is it going to be, you know? You know, if I, if I offer you a COVID test and everybody gets COVID nineteen vaccinated, pardon me, and you decline, which is your right. Now, what, what does that do? Do I now need to have a, do we need to consider things differently for one or two people? These are the things that have never been discussed before that, that it's going to impact school and what school is going to look like. So there's my rant, because the budget in terms of what we need to do for FY twenty two, we believe we, we have that. We, we believe that we have a good path forward, but a lot is going to change moving from this point on to beginning of school. That may very well require, I don't know, you know, massive changes, if nothing else, to, um, to the protocols. I guess is the word I would use.
Thank you, and thank you, Anne Marie as well. Does anyone on the committee have any other questions? Because from here, our next steps are, we have a meeting scheduled for next Thursday. It's a, um, a budget presentation to the public, um, where we'll basically take the presentation that was just given to us. Um, I'm not sure, you know, what additional, if there will be additional information or whatever added to it. Um, that'll be really, um, our first publicly announced presentation of this budget. Which is what will precede our official budget hearing on March third, um, where we'll get to hear more from the public. So at least they'll have a chance next week to digest this information and then have the ability to comment during the public hearing on the third. And then we anticipate on the third that the committee would vote on a budget at that point, we would certify some numbers. Would be our expected path. So if anyone has any questions or comments or observations at this point that they want to share. You know, I, I would say speak up and, and, uh, otherwise we can move on to the, our next pieces of business. Um, and move through the meeting. So does anybody have any questions or comments on this FY budget as of right now? Okay, I don't see anybody. Um, as I, as I said, I just thank you, Dr. Kazman and Ms. Geister. For all the work that went into putting the presentation and the numbers together, you know, and everyone else on the team who had a hand in that. And I, I just want to comment on the fact that, um, you know, remediation is, is big. So, um, hearing the plans of how we're going to impact the students by using some of these S or two funds. And, you know, where our resources are going to be, sounds like the right way to go. Because we can't do remediation with class sizes that are too large, so this will help us with that. And, you know, unfortunately, you know, we are where we are with staffing and this will help, you know, fill some of those gaps. So that, that was good to see that, so. All right, so if there's nothing else on the budget, we will skip into the business manager's report. Ms. Geister, if you have anything to highlight with the reports that you've provided?
I just want to point out on the, um. General fund, we've been carrying in fixed charges, if you look at the subtotal page. You see that it's constantly in the red and I just want to, I think I've said it before, but I just want to say it again. That the reason that those fixed charge lines are in the red is because there's an extra health insurance payment. Being taken out of there this year. Um, so at the end of the year, when we move monies around, we will cover that deficit. Also, part of what makes up that number is I am able to pay off a couple of our small equipment leases. Early, which helped out the FY twenty two budget. Those two leases were the two pieces of equipment that the facilities has gotten in the last few years and those are coming to an end. And they have a lot longer useful life than computers do. So, um, I'm taking care of those this year, just to free up a little bit of money in FY twenty twos. Budget. The second thing, and these seem to keep popping up on us at, with not much notice, but we have a new grant. We just found out about it last week. It is called. The coronavirus. There, there's another term that goes on the end of it, but basically it's more funds to use. Towards getting you ready to be in school. But the only caveat with this one is, we have seventy one thousand, there's a payment coming for half of it in February and the other half in April. And the funds must be used by June thirtieth. So it's great to get the money, but it's becoming a little bit challenging trying to find expenses. That are one time items that aren't going to be something that you're going to have to maintain year after year. So, um, we've decided with this one, we are going to purchase. New textbooks for middle school math, so we'll update their textbooks and their online licenses. Which will be a big chunk of this money and the remainder of this money. Is what is covering a long-term sub, which has allowed us to open the elementary school for the entire day. To serve lunch when we do that beginning on March first. So it's a good thing, but sometimes it's a struggle trying to figure out exactly. What is the best things to cover with this money?
And I'd just like to add, just, you know, so that was the back-to-back letter day of last week. You know, we'd say, hey, we're going to come back full time, but we're going to have to, you know, because of staffing, we can't, you know, do busing and. People are like, oh, great, but, but then literally the next day, Wednesday, we get this information. We're going to hire a full-time, you know, interim, you know, person to cover the schedule. So now the, the elementary kids, when they are in person and they go to school either Monday, Tuesday or Thursday, Friday, they're going to be there for the typical school day. Like we used to have back in the old days, right? Um, and that was very well received and, and it's important that we get back into this because it starts the other conversation. But to Anne Marie's point, you know, to, we're, we're very thankful, right? But boy, you know, some notice would have been nice, you know what I mean? But again, we're not going to look a gift horse in the mouth, I think my letter actually said that. Um, we're just, we're going to, we're going to utilize it the best way we can for kids and staff, and that was a great way, at least for the elementary. So when they, for the kids who are in person, they'll, they will literally be on a typical schedule. Um, and having lunch and all the whole thing, which I, right now, I, it's worth its weight in gold. Because kids are really starting to, and staff are starting to fall out of kind of, I don't know, practice. So it was, it was a great use of the money.
Anyone have any questions for Anne Marie or Dr. Kazman on that? Any, any, uh, yep, go ahead, Ms. Trifalo?
Yeah, it's just a question to follow up on that hybrid description. I guess you may not have the numbers now, but how many, take a second grade. How many students come in on Thursday, Friday, and how many come in Monday, Tuesday?
I'm sorry, go ahead, sorry.
I'm just checking on, on, um. Some reporting of the fact that there, there isn't, um, there isn't a, a double-digit number on those days. So, so my, my thought is, is it a jump? To say we could do Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, because the number of students coming on those days. Both cohorts is small enough to make one cluster and they could come four days.
I think that, um, well, first off, we, we have an MOU with the NDEA. In regards to how the schedule looks or the, the week, not the schedule, the week. I can assure you though, that in terms of the, and you're right, I don't have them, and actually I was going to. I was too, because I said, you know, this might come up, but we, at the, at the elementary, um, their, their maxes are fourteen per class at three feet.
Do we meet, do we meet that with the kids in the different groups such as homeschool or? Uh, uh, remote, how many kids are coming in?
I can get you that. I don't, there are some grades that are like the fourth grade is, is, I can tell you that the fourth grade is pretty full. Um, whatever that means, okay, under the, under this, um, you know, under this metric. Um, in terms of the younger grades, you know, yeah, we have seen quite a few kids whom, um, are not, you know. We just don't have the numbers, but I will, I can absolutely get that information and we were just, we were just literally looking at this. Um, because of lunches, again, uh, just the number of lunches, because they have to be at six feet, Kate.
Um, I just wanted to add to that, that the numbers. If we can only have fifteen at one time, if you have, um, twenty and you have two groups of ten. It's, might seem low, but you can't put them together because you can't have more than fifteen. So it's based on the space constraints. So, um. I just wanted to, to point that out, that each group by themselves might seem small, but together we can only fit fifteen at once. In most of the, I think at all of those classrooms, if I recall correctly, Chris.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, I understand that and, and I really am just hoping that September, um, brings something a whole lot different. Because, um, I was hoping we could edge into that a little more at the end of this year. But we'll look at those numbers and see what they are for the space constraints. I'm sure you've done that with the lunches coming. But I don't know that we've talked about it in a bit.
Well, so to the point is that, so now the new bus guidance came out and kids can sit. Two kids can sit in a, in one seat, which, by the way, I'm happy. So this isn't my next comment, I, I don't want to shade away from that, I'm happy about that. What has changed since the beginning? I, and I'm not, and again, I'm not, I'm not trying, so this is what I, so all I want to know, and I, 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 and I do. I aim, what has changed? Well, the guidance has changed, okay. So the guidance has changed, we're very good at what we do, we, you know, and talking about all of us in school, that's great. That is a precursor to what's, I think that through probably legislation. Because Kate had to fill out the report again and send it off to Desi about our, how many kids do we have, you know, in person? How many kids do we have that they, they're, I think that there is, there is, they've already said it. That, that we are, they are, they are moving towards regularity, I think that's how they put it. Um, in terms of regular, yeah, normalcy, thank you, normalcy, and I think that we're going to see something that looks like that this year. So I don't know, I can't tell you what that'll look like, because we don't, I don't know, it's not a secret, but certainly transportation was the first, I think was the first. You know, was the first mark, and so we'll, we'll, they're going to have to, they're going to have to relax the three, six foot rules. And for us to come back to any type of normalcy, because we're almost full in many areas, but not all, to your point, Rayanne, absolutely.
Yeah, and let's hope they do that after they vaccinate teachers.
Anne Marie, did you have anything else to add? I don't, I'm sorry to cut you off, I just wanted to see if we had questions on that particular point, so anything else?
No, I, that was it.
Okay, um, anyone have any other questions for Anne Marie on the business managers' reports? Because we are going to now jump into COVID, um, which we've already touched on a little bit, but I know we do need to talk about the hybrid B transition with the lunches. Um, to make that official and then any other updates. So, um, if there's no questions, looking, I don't see anybody with their hand up. Um, then I'll turn it over to Dr. Kazvent to talk about any COVID issues, um, including the, the hybrid B transition.
So just quick, um, we've just talked with, uh, you know, our nurse leader, Mariah, yesterday. And we are, we are literally all set to do, you know, badge testing and the, um, quick testing. So we're, we're in good shape in terms of that. I, I've shared the update with you in regards to busing, in essence, two kids who are not related from the same household, I should say. Can sit, first, you know, in the seats that have been designated, but the windows still have to be open. So it's going to be a cold ride, wear your hat. Um, so anyway, so that's, that's been great. We've, um, so before you tonight is, uh, and again, this plan was, uh, created. Back in, oh boy, July, August, um, it had, uh, it had focus groups at every level. And in an essence, we had a hybrid A and we had a hybrid B. And really the difference between the two, um, was that hybrid B had lunch involved. The only reason why we did not go to hybrid B at that point in time is that we did not have the staff. At that point, we were still hiring, trying to find, you know, staff members, you know, because again, we had to spread out and, and do those type of things. So we, we knew that we, it was better to start slow, so we could go fast, which is funny, because it's now, well, almost March and we're, haven't. Been able to do lunch yet, but we're, we're prepared now. Um, so before you, it, you know, it to change. To change that, um, to hybrid B, that we would, you know, I would, I would believe that, you know, you would. Need to vote that, because I, if, again, I went back, I believe hybrid A was voted on, and Miss Hughes, please correct me, I, I don't. I'm trying to remember, I'm sure it had to be voted on, the plan had to be voted on. But in terms of the internal change, we are going to start lunch March first, which is, which is great. And so we've, that would be really hybrid B for us.
Okay, yes, and I think, um, as you were saying, um, the school committee does need to just vote to make that official. As we transition between the, um, the different plans that we have. So, um, tonight, I, I would entertain a motion to change to the hybrid B. Model, which includes lunch delivery effective, um, you said March first, I believe is the correct date. So, um, I would entertain a motion to do so at this time. Um, I'm not sure who that, that, um, I'll take Mrs. Kojal, just because I saw you, uh, first and I'll, is there a second? And I think that was Mrs. Mattson maybe with the second, I'm not sure, I'm sorry. Mrs. Farney, if you, she's shaking her head, so that'll do. Okay, any, um, questions or comments on that motion? Um, and the plan to move to the hybrid B model serving lunches effective March first? Okay, seeing none, we will do a roll call vote. Uh, Mrs. Mattson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kojal?
Yeah.
Mrs. Chartier?
Yes.
Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Mrs. Trifalo?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes, so the school committee has voted unanimously to move to the hybrid B model, um, with lunches being served March first. Um, please, you know, send along our thanks to everyone for all the preparation and, uh, you know. Making the necessary arrangements and adjustments to make that happen. Um, I know that the students will benefit tremendously from spending the, the full day there and get back to a sense of. You know, if they can't be there five days a week, at least they're getting their two days with a sense of normalcy for a full day. Um, and as a parent, I'm really on board with that, so thank you personally, um, as well as, as being a committee member. Um, any other updates on, um, for COVID nineteen? I, I know personally, just because my son plays, I believe football is kicking off fall two, which is February twenty second. Which is kind of odd to be fall, but okay.
We're, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna do it. You know, we didn't give ourselves as much hope for basketball and, but tonight will be the last night for the girls and the boys and. Um, and, you know, Abby had mentioned that and, uh, it went very, very well and we did, you know, honestly. So, um, we have, we have actually, with, with the exception of being really, really cold and snowy. Um, we, you know, we're, we're, we're very confident, uh, because it's outside and, you know, we, we think, you know, certainly that things will go better out there. But you're right, so the twenty second, which is coming soon, uh, to you, very quickly, will be, uh, football. And, um, there's more to come with that in terms of where the games will be played and all of that. But people are certainly excited and our numbers are actually pretty high, I, I, you know. But five game season, um, again, a pod of just very local teams and, uh, it'll, it'll be great, quite frankly. So we'll, you know, we'll have a good time.
Looking forward to it, gonna get my, my long johns and big, big mittens out. Okay, um, school committee comments, does, uh, anyone on the school committee want to make any comments at this point? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Um, surplus items, I don't believe we have anything, so we'll skip the, over that. New business is the FY twenty two school year calendar. Um, we'd just like to request that Dr. Kazvent put his calendar committee in place and be prepared to present, you know, a draft of the calendar. Um, if it's ready for our next regular school committee meeting at the end of March, I know there's a lot of unknown. Um, if it's ready for our next regular school committee meeting at the end of March, I know there's a lot of unknowns, so, you know, whatever the calendar looks like with, uh, you know, list out whatever the assumptions are, um, so we can start getting some information out to parents, um, I think that would be good.
Will do.
And I don't have any, oh, go ahead, Mrs. Trifalo.
Yeah, in that calendar, uh, committee, could there be, uh, some information brought back to us about their feelings on snow days, when they are remote, when they want to play in the snow, what the, how it affects the end of the year, so that, um, you know, we have some idea of when the school would end, given those, uh, given that information.
I will do, I can tell you that the state is also gonna weigh in, um, this year, they, I think he missed, well, I don't know if he misspoke, but he certainly um, told a group of superintendents that they didn't need to have snow days, and we took him up on it, so I think that, um, I think that he, and he's already signaled that that, that'll, he'll allow that this year, meaning we can kind of figure it out. Uh, but I, I don't believe we'll have the same flexibility next year, and, but I will, though, it's important to know what the committee thinks, meaning the the calendar committee as well as the school committee, because, uh, you know, I see, I see somewhere in the middle, quite frankly, right, uh, maybe the first three be snowed, or something, I don't know, but I will definitely, um, you know, will, that'll be one of our discussions.
Great, thank you. Okay, um, there was no items that came up within forty-eight hours. Um, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Kazman, I know you've already spoken about a whole bunch of things, including enrollment and whatnot, but, um, Freddie, updates, if we have anything on the regional agreement amendment committee, and also the PMES building turnover, because I believe that was effective the thirteenth, so if you have any comments that you want to add on those.
Absolutely, so, and I only have the, the, the two, quite frankly, so, um, uh, as my letter indicated that I sent, um, to the committee as well as to, uh, the select board, Phillips and Select Board, um, we ended our relationship in, in its entirety, um, last Friday, um, and, and I think I forwarded to you, uh, the, uh, the, you know, the town administrators, thanks. Um, we did in fact top off the, the fuels, and we, we did some snow removal from the roof, which really wasn't us, I have to just, we, we were, um, we noticed that there was, you know, some things that we needed to check on, but that, either way, we, the, the transition went fine, as far as I, as far as I know, um, other than, uh, Kevin's, uh, you know, email to us, just thanking us for the information, I know that Anne Marie has been working very, very closely, um, with the town administrator, you know, for Phillips, and just all the information in terms of, you know, utility handoffs, et cetera, so it's gone very, very well. Um, so I, I think, you know, again, no news is good news, so I, I, you know, I have not heard otherwise. Um, in regards to the RAC meeting, we have a meeting that is coming up, and, and, uh, Susan?
Next week.
Next week, yeah, I believe, or, yeah, I, I just don't have my calendar in front of me.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, so we did receive some information today that, that folks are going to need to be sworn in, um, who are, are on the board, Susan, can you just maybe fill in the gaps?
Yes, so, um, we were given the information that people that serve as at-large citizens on the, um, committee need to be sworn in by their town clerk, so each town has two at-large members, and we will be reaching out to them to let them know that they need to make arrangements with their town clerk in order to be sworn in.
I offer that as just as an FYI, just to kind of put it certainly on the general record, um, but we were contacted by, I believe by, if not both, but at least one of, oh, okay, so.
One of the selectmen in Templeton, the selectmen are covered because they're selectmen and they're already sworn in, um, as well as the administrators, um, the town administrators, but the at-large folks need to be sworn in.
All right, okay, and then, um, and are we reaching out to those, those members? It's, it's, it's an interesting, um, conundrum of, of who they represent, um, because they're re-representing the school district, which is its own municipality, um, but they are residents of the town, and really, it doesn't make a difference, um, you know, so go ahead, let those, the town clerks swear them in and let them, them do their duty, and that's great. Um, but are we the ones that will reach out to the members?
Yes, I plan on sending them an email and copying the town clerks, and then they could click it from there.
Awesome, thank you, Susan.
You're welcome.
And quite frankly, just given everything that we've talked about today, that's all I have for the update.
All right, um, last, um, of our regular items here is just a curriculum and up, an instruction update, and one of the new items that is on here, although we alluded to it at the last meeting, is the program of studies for next year, and really, it's just introduced to say, you know, hey, you know, we're expecting this coming our way, and I know you're already working on it, so it's more, it's just an FYI to the public that will be looking at this in the next couple of months to have something approved, uh, but I'll turn it over to Kate for what other information that you want to share.
Sure, thank you, um, just a couple of quick things, um, I, we, we are, um, working on planning Project Lead the Way, and as you saw in the budget presentation, there's been support from Dr. Cassavant, from, you know, all of the admin in the district, as well as school committee, and, um, I think it's important to realize that MassSTEMHub and, um, the 1A Foundation that give us the grants for it really, um, ask about that partnership, that all of the stakeholders are involved, and I want to just thank you for the support that the district and the school committee has shown to Project Lead the Way. We plan to write a new grant to add, um, biomedical science, and, you know, it remains to be seen, um, how that will go, but if that's the case, then we'll be adding a course in that field, which I think would be a nice tie-in. Um, it's also been beneficial with us when we've had conversations with Mount Wachusett along some lines, um, about career pathways, they, they feel like that's a, uh, Project Lead the Way in general is a good fit for that. Um, so there's, there's that piece, and, and I can't really ever say Project Lead the Way without thanking the teachers we have, because we have tremendous teachers doing this work, and they're really, engaging the, the students and the kids love the courses and love the teachers, so that's great. The other piece also mentioned in the budget, and thanks to the support for, from Ms. Geister and Dr. Cassman, is the summer intervention planning that we're, um, we're undertaking, so we're doing that in the next, you know, probably month or more, um, planning to offer intervention services to students in reading, um, more broadly than we had in the past. I know there have always been summer, um, services for students with, um, IEPs, but these will be services for, um, because we're a school-wide Title I, um, at Templeton Elementary, so any student who is struggling within the capacity that we have, with the funds we have, we're gonna, um, plan a program, so that is really, um, great news, you know, given COVID and, and the, um, the difficulties some students are having.
Sorry, couldn't buy the unmute button, thank you. Um, yeah, and we look forward to hearing more information as you start to put those plans together, and what they'll look like. Um, I'm, I'm encouraged by the fact that I know everything that I keep seeing about the, the SR2 funding and some of the other grants, you know, the focus on, on remediation and making sure we have these summer programs in place, so I think it's gonna be imperative, um, you know, that we, we provide the services, um, and we look forward to more updates as you have them, um, on what our plans are.
Yeah, and I would just say we're positioned very well to do this, because we have a really awesome intervention staff that works with elementary students throughout the year, so, um, we're, we're gonna be meeting with them, we have a meeting next week, and, uh, to talk about the, the planning of the summer program, but it, it, it will be a natural next step for us, and so I, I expect it to go pretty well.
Great, thank you. Okay. All right, um, with that, we're on to subcommittees, and I'm just looking through the list of our subcommittees, I think we've pretty much gotten updates for all of the subcommittees, um, through our regular meeting, with exception of perhaps, uh, diversity and equity inclusion, I don't know if Jeff, if you had anything new that you wanted to report out right now?
Yeah, I, i-if you're, give me a minute or two, yeah, I, I can go through real quick, uh, monitor. So, um, I think as the committee's aware, the, um, uh, Diversity and Equity Inclusion Subcommittee is currently viewing the district's mascot. Um, on the student side, we have two great, uh, we've recruited two excellent students, Maddie Ambrosi and Nadia Surin, who brought some great ideas, um, and tremendous energy to the committee. Um, our discussions thus far have been focused around Warrior Nation, and how this is, how the Warrior Nation is a symbol of, um, um, the district in everything we stand for, strength, courage, respect, pride. Uh, we feel that these great values would pay tribute to the Warrior Nation. Um, so in our discussions, we have talked about how warriors work together as a team, supporting and protecting each other, conducting themselves with honor, uh, meeting competition, challenges, um, and, uh, fair play. Uh, so the committee may recall that the, uh, subcommittee recently, uh, submitted an application to Mount Wachusett Community College to be part of their graphic design service learning project. I'm happy to report tonight that we have been accepted. So earlier this week, uh, the committee had our first meeting with Anthony David, who was the student appointed, uh, to the NRSD project, okay? Our initial meeting focused on the committee's goals and visions for the project. Um, our plan is to work with Anthony to develop several schematic designs for us all to review, and scale down to a final design. Um, so the, the, the Diversity Committee feels, uh, that not only with this, um, with the service learning project, but with everything that the committee does, it's crucial to listen to the perspectives of, of our students. Uh, as I stated earlier, I feel blessed that we have two representatives, um, who are so engaged and constructive to the process. Um, our conversations, um, have been focused around inanimate, uh, objects. Um, uh, that's what we're designing the, uh, for an unbiased mascot, to make sure that the new mascot would be unbiased. Uh, so one of the ideas we're tossing around is possibly looking at a mythical being, uh, that would fall within the we, uh, warrior category. Uh, one idea we're thinking about giving to Anthony, uh, would be a Trojan warrior. Uh, and we're just wondering what the committee thinks of this, um, if you have any ideas, any concerns, and if anybody doesn't have anything now, that's fine, you can email us out, but I just kind of, I wanted to get that out there, just to give an update of where we are in the process. Um, I think it's great that we, um, that we were accepted into the Mount Wachusett, um, Service Learning Project. Again, I have to give a shout out to Kate, uh, for pushing that our way, so I really appreciate that. Um, and again, I, I think the Anthony, um, who was a student from Mount Wachusett i-is great, uh, we had a great meeting with him, so, um, again, I don't want to take up too much of our time, I just wanted everybody to know where we are, and, um, you know, really, before we move forward too far with Anthony, um, I just kind of want to present everything to the committee and make sure that we're not going down a direction that anybody has any concerns with, so, all right?
Yeah, thank you, Jeff, maybe on our next regular meeting, which is probably the end of March, um, we can, we'll have an agenda item just dedicated to give you a little more time, um, to bring everybody up to speed, um, and get some feedback on where you're going as a subcommittee and, and, uh, and what that means, so that'd be-
Again, in, in the meantime, if anybody has anything, just feel free to shoot it out to us, okay? Thank you.
Okay. Right, any, um, any other updates for subcommittees? Um, I just wanted to talk, we did get a few comments on the YouTube feed. Um, Terry Griffiths, uh, from the Select Board in Templeton, said that Tim, which she's referring to Tim Toleth, who is also a Select Board member in Templeton, had to get sworn in separately for the Templeton Elementary School Business Committee. There's no blanket swearing in, unappointed positions, unappointed positions, excuse me, still under myself. Um, Tim Toleth then said, if not sworn in, the RAC members cannot vote, this applies to all subcommittees. Um, and I'm gonna skip Christine Bennett's comment for a second, I'll go back to her in one moment, because then Tim said, learn that all meeting notices must be posted on the town meeting's calendar. Various minutes are to be easily available to public for review per open meeting laws, which is fine. Um, and I, I, my only comment there, and I, as I said, I, it makes no difference to me who swears and who, this subcommittee is a subcommittee of the Narragansett Regional School District, not of either of the towns. Um, but if the towns need to swear to people, and that's absolutely fine, let's do it, let's get it done, and make sure that we're doing everything properly. Um, so thank you for those comments to both Terry and Tim, we appreciate those. Uh, Christine Bennett just asked a question, and I know that we did bring this up at the academic administrative subcommittee meeting last month, about the AP, um, have the AP test requirements been set for this year with COVID still impeding things? And this was the question, um, about the, um, AP designation on the transcript, if a student feels they're not prepared to take the AP test because of, of COVID and the way instruction has. And I believe, Kate, you were going to be working with administration to have that discussion, and we should probably have an update, maybe next month on that. Okay, so she gave me a thumbs up, so Christine, more to come on that, it's being looked at, so we can make some decisions, I believe. The college board has announced some information on, um, testing, it just came out, I believe, within the last week, about how they're planning on implementing AP tests, so we're still learning a lot of what's gonna happen. Um, so Christine, we will update on that, and, uh, based on the recommendations of the administration, um, through Kate, with, uh, you know, the academic officer, uh, role that she plays, so. Okay, um, I think I caught up on the comments, let me see, I'm just gonna refresh to make sure, okay? And with that being said, we don't have any correspondence, and upcoming meetings, again, next week on Thursday, we're doing our, just a budget presentation for the public. Um, and, so be on the lookout for some more information on that, um, it has been advertised, um, along with the budget hearing on March third. Um, so people will, should have seen that in the paper, if you read the paper, and it'll be out, hopefully advertised on our Facebook page, et cetera. And that will start at six o'clock, it'll be via Zoom. Um, and other than that, I don't have anything else, and I'm gonna look to the committee, or Dr. Kazman, or anyone, if there's anything else. Okay, and we are going into executive session this evening to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, bargaining, or litigation with the NDEA and with the UFCW. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. This meeting will not return into open session immediately following, so I would entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Marks, do I have a second?
Second.
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 Okay, we'll do a roll call to enter into executive session, Mrs. Mattson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kojal? All right, she shook her head yes. Uh, Mrs. Chartier?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mrs. Trifalo?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Aye.
Um, Mrs. Kojal, I'm just gonna see if you could say it again, so we-
Yes.
Okay, now I heard you, sorry, you might have cut with the mute.
No, I froze up for a minute, again.
Great, just want for the record to have it recorded, and Mrs. Hughes says yes, so I want to thank everyone for, um, watching on our live feed this evening and attending our meeting. Um, and we are going to, into executive session, we will not be coming out, so thank you for joining us, and I'll see the school committee and everyone in-